Jeff?
Here.
I'm also here for community certification certificates. Thank you, please drive me in. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your volunteer group admission statement.
I will. The Mount Horford Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Moving on to two A, approval of the agenda. Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on to two B, December 16, 2019, regular executive session. Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Moving on to three. Three A is student spotlight.
Thank you, welcome, good evening. We have, your name is in lights, Lucas. We're excited to have you here tonight. When I spoke with Principal Christians and I said, Paul, tell me a little bit about a student who could be a member of our student spotlight from the board, he needed to say, I gotta tell you about Lucas. So I don't want to steal your thunder.
Sure.
But I heard Friday morning was exceptional over at the high school. Mike Lucas, can you join us at the microphone, please, and tell a little bit about it, please?
Well, Dr. Slanero's right, I'm really excited to have Lucas as our middle school student spotlight. He's just a fantastic eighth grader here. Actually just came over from touring the high school within the last half an hour, they had their freshman night tonight. But just a fantastic kid in the classroom, does well academically as well as just what we expect from anybody as far as respect and responsibility and all that. He's really involved, particularly in music and theater, 4K, Corona area theater, I think you're in all three, band orchestra and choir here. I actually had the opportunity to work with him last year in student council. I was filling in as the advisor for a little bit and it was just an absolute joy to watch him interact with his peers. And towards the end of the year, we needed to vote for this year's president and his peers, hands down, he was their first choice to be student council president. And he has just done a fantastic job with that. So as Dr. Slanero said, Friday morning, actually, Lucas helped organize a pennies for patients fundraiser. And we had an all-school assembly on Friday morning, he was the one that introduced the speaker. There he is in front of 590 other middle schoolers, presenting our speaker and sharing some information about that pennies for patients fundraiser that we've got going on. I asked his teachers about him as well, because I knew him, but I wanted to sort of hear what they had said. And a couple of things that really stuck out to me was just how positive he is, how hard working he is, and his leadership skills. And there were a couple quotes. Mr. Ginter said that Lucas is just great to have in class, he's always approaches tasks with a positive attitude. And this one is one that I saw that stuck out to me as well. Mr. Miller said, Lucas is an amazing leader and that has shown when he's speaking to student council. He shows respect to students around him, including the younger students. He wants to make sure that everyone is involved and that everyone is getting what they want to get out of being a part of student council. And that really sums up Lucas. I just, I can't, I can't. Thank you enough for being one of our students here at the middle school. I'm just really, really looking forward to seeing what he's gonna do throughout the next four years. So, there's Lucas.
Lucas, would you like to say a few words at all? You're associated with this beautiful family you have here.
This is my mother, since I was a youngster, and this is my father, David Dallas, and this is my little brother, this is the sixth grader, Nicholas.
Wonderful.
Goodness.
Thank you for having me, guys. You know, that starts at the home, too, and we're so grateful to your family for instilling those values and that mindset of helping others, you know, and service to others. Would it be okay if we took a picture this evening? And I know, Damon, you're our middle school liaison, and Diana, would you be willing to join us? How about back over here, would that be okay? Our photography studio over here.
Yeah.
Lucas, we have this certificate to commemorate this special night here, too.
Okay. Just to tear that way. All right, thank you. All right, ready? One, two, three. And I want to take him this way. One, two, three. All right. Wonderful.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work, Brendan. I haven't seen that in a show in my career.
Yeah. Okay, of course. Yes. Yes, yes. Thank you.
Good night, Diane.
All right, now we move on to three D, school news.
Okay, well, not sure quite how I can top that off, but there are a bunch of positive things going on in the high school right now. It's really heavy for academic competition. Academics at Capone has their district competition on Friday, and DECA has districts on Saturday. So the overlap kids are gonna be pretty busy. As far as music goes, we have Taste of Jazz, January 25th. That's a whole bunch of different programs playing a whole bunch of jazz music, there's gonna be desserts. Are tickets available for that yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? So, almost time to buy tickets for that. As well as the mentors who set up all of the freshman introduction stuff that happened all tonight are doing cocoa and cream for the current freshmen, as we're all going into finals week, which for freshmen can be kind of an intimidating time. We were able before break to wrap up a lot of our holiday community service. NHS did holiday treats that they sent out with care packages for friends of State Street for people experiencing homelessness in Madison. We met our goal of 68 donations for the blood drive with student council, so that was a super exciting thing for us. Should I not talk about the cards thing?
Oh, please do.
Okay, I wasn't sure. There were seven boxes of handmade cards, really big boxes, from students and staff all over the district. I know several of the different activities that I've participated in contributed, all of the schools, I think, have contributed at least a little bit to Jean, I'm not gonna butcher the last name, what?
There you go.
Awesome. And the pictures from that are just so beautiful and so touching. I know a lot of high schoolers who, like, who have family members who have experienced grave illness, it was really touching to them to feel like they were able to do something, even just in their free time, especially a lot of high schoolers where they don't necessarily have the financial means to go donate to all of these different places. I know a lot of people felt that they were really able to make a difference through that. Another big thing as far as Winter Formal is coming up in about a month, that's also student council and the proceeds from that dance always end up going to charity. We haven't picked the charity yet, but usually it's, you either donate a canned food item or pay for your ticket and then that's also charity. So a whole lot of giving going on in the high school in small ways.
Great. Yeah, thank you. Other school news?
I want to piggyback on one if you don't mind, and that's that DECA district career development conference. This will be my fourth year that I've had the pleasure to go, that's happening this Saturday.
Yeah.
I think I talked to Ms. Allison, she said that there's about 80 students from our district who'll be competing at this event at Sun Prairie High School. And then the MFA toy show happened this past weekend, didn't get a chance to get out there, that's always a treat. And then lastly, I want to thank our Board of Education members who are going to be coming together with other boards from around Dane County on the topic of equity. That'll be happening on January the 15th at 5:30 PM at Windsor Elementary School just on the northeast side of Dane County.
Thank you. Other school news? All right, move on to three C, citizens comments. Do you want to say something, Sarah?
Yeah.
Other citizens comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to four. Four A is our personnel transactions. There was an addendum, I think, this actually.
That's right. Madam President, if you would allow me just a moment, just to recognize two people who are on our list this evening who are preparing to retire, two folks from our elementary kindergarten program. One of our favorite parts of being able to recognize these outstanding professionals, I'm referring to Kim Lins and Susan McKenzie, is just to take a stroll down memory lane and look through their employment files, and we've done just that. Let's start with Kim Lins. Ms. Lins has been with the district since 1995. Prior to coming to Mount Horford, she taught just in the Black River Falls area. And she's taught third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and now our little kindergarten students. And I think she's been in kindergarten for about 18 years because the class of 2017, I think, is the first class that she's been able to see all the way through. Even when she first got started, families began to recognize what we've long known about Kim. Written letters and they've been placed in her file, letters that reflect things like, we struck a gold mine with you, Mrs. Lins. Another one said, as I write this letter, there's tears rolling down my face. I wouldn't tell you that, but I want you to understand what a difference this one teacher has made in the life of our family. When people like you make such a difference for our children, there's no words of gratitude large enough. And we know that about our dear Kim, we wish her very, very well. And then Susan McKenzie, she's been with us since 1988. She was hired as an afternoon kindergarten teacher. And she was described, even from the very beginning, as a professional who was very caring and having the ability to be a leader in the school. Wouldn't you know it, almost 30 years later, well, more than 30 years later, we've recognized that in full. One of the things I love about Sue McKenzie's backstory is that she's actually a product of the Mount Horford Area School District. And one of the comments that RJ, Rachel Johnson, the principal, wrote in one of her most recent evaluations was, "Thank you for your amazing patience, your never-ending optimism, and your commitment to students." She wrote, "It's an absolute honor and a pleasure to work with Susan McKenzie. And I know that you all joined with me in thanking them for their extraordinary service to this district, and we look forward to celebrating them sometime this spring here." So, thank you for allowing me to highlight these fantastic professionals.
Thank you.
Motion to review full documents. Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod.
So, may I be recognized? I'm sorry.
You may.
I don't, I don't know if these are official documents or not, but we've shorted Kim a year, so.
2017?
I think that's 1920.
Just effective end of the year. Thank you.
She's got her.
Well, we don't want that.
No, 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 sure. Exactly, and the day after, and the day after that. So, I don't know.
Thank you. Again, I don't know. Please. Thank you for catching that.
Fair enough.
Jeff, you accepted with that change? Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on to five, consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to pull up? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, moving on to six, our discussion at six A is our information advocacy report, school demographics, and student services teams, and show of the number. Brian Johnson.
Yeah, thanks so much. So, this kind of goes on a couple of the goals that we have in the wellbeing area. One is just looking at student demographics, right? How have things changed in the past few years? And then also looking at the work we've been doing and continue to do in the area of student services, looking at some data, but also what kind of services are we providing as a whole? So when you look at the student demographics, you know, just when you just look at the number of kids by grade, I always think that this is such a fascinating slide because it's really such a roller coaster, right? Of kids per grade, so that's, you know, just looking, you know, just constantly kind of close. All of the data that we get is through Y-S dash secure, and so it's, will, some of it will be published later in the public portal, but as of right now, it's all organized. So our current comp date, number, it's the most recent number, is 2,535 students. And so when you go into the next slide, it really looks at, this is like the number of bodies that have ever been in our school. And so, we're a little bit lower, but we still have half the year left, right? So it's not based on third grade account, it's just the overall number of kids. They might not have finished the term, but they've kind of come in and may have left within the district. And so we're continuously staying right on about, you know, plus or minus 50 students where we are with kids within our district. If we start breaking down the numbers and looking at trends, the first one is race and ethnicity. It's important to note that this data is self-selected, and it's remained relatively stable, although we are becoming more diverse. So it's kind of starting to shift within the last, probably within really this year, we're starting to see that number increase in different of the categories. And that just makes the work that we're doing in terms of equity even more important. And so we're doing a lot of work in equity, training of administrators, training of staff, how to be more culturally responsive within our whole education environment. And that goes to the great work that you guys are doing as support to continuing to get training from a board level, too, as well, so. Another breakdown of the data is students with disabilities. This, when you look at it as a percentage-wise, it looks like it's remained relatively stable. However, 35 kids, you know, about, I guess about 30 kids, does make a big difference in your specific classrooms, right? And so while we have seen the percentage-wise, it stayed pretty consistent, the numbers have increased, and we've started to see more of a more significant needs to within the classroom. And so, special ed continues to remain one of the reasons why families are open and rolling into our district, and that's kind of remained throughout many years as well. Looking at ELL, right, all of the data kind of tells a picture, but there's always more to the story, right? And so when it says specifically in Y-S dash that there's 32 students, it really goes much deeper than that because how they get that data is by the access for ELL's assessment. None of our 4K students are in there right now, nor are kindergarten students, because that test doesn't happen until the spring, or started about right now, actually. And so, when you add those kids in, we're servicing 36, or we're actually, they're servicing 38 students, and then we have an additional eight students that we're providing monitoring for, so they met the cutoff to meeting proficiency in English language, but we're still looking at their academic language, we're still monitoring them, still checking on them, and still making sure that they're being successful within the classroom. And if they weren't, they could come back and then still receive services. So they're constantly being monitored, checked. And then, one of the areas that, again, is self-selected, we did see a drop from last year, is our students who are free and reduced lunch. So last year we had about 350 students, this year we have 274. And so, you know, I'm not quite sure why, but that does seem to be a drop, and that does not include 4K students, because they don't need lunch, so they're not filling out the reports.
Brendan, can I ask if you'd be kind enough to speak to the trends we see in families who complete the paperwork as students get older?
Yeah, so a lot of times, kids just, it becomes a stigma, right? Free and reduced lunch becomes a stigma portion, and so depending on years, you're just seeing less and less students really completing that paperwork and not wanting to have that free and reduced lunch, hence stigma attached with it.
Does that, so as they get older, it becomes less, they're less likely to fill that out? And when they fill that out, that's online through the registration process, so they wouldn't be identified in any way.
They're not technically identified, except for they know. So, we're continuing to work on that and, you know, trying to get rid of that stigma that goes along with it, because when you look at the next slide, you know, we are seeing increased need. And so when we're looking at the number of students who are homeless within our district, that number was in a decline and then really increased this past school year. And those are, you know, students are continuing to be receiving direct services with social work, our continued, you know, services, we're doing the Leave That Backpack program, Ms. Dank is, you know, working on all different ways to help support families through food insecurities. Our, we have the food pantry now at the district office that, I don't know if you can fill it fast enough, it's kind of consistently needing to be replenished. And so we're seeing, you know, adults and kids at all hours coming in and grabbing food from that. And so, just another realization about individuals within the community that are really needing support.
And Kenny Vento describes explicitly what homelessness is, would you be able to provide a reader's digest for me of what that means?
Yeah, and so that's, you know, where homeless versus stable housing, right? In the description. So Kenny Vento is really anybody who doesn't have stable housing. So it does, it could mean that they're living out of a tent, out of a car, but it also, in our community, more likely that they're doubling up with a different family, they were maybe removed from their, their house, and so they're living with another family, whether that's in the basement or on the sofas. Could also mean that they're in hotels, which is also common within this community. They're not stable, they're not gonna stay there, but they're in it for at least a few months, and then they're trying to get out. Our, you remember a few weeks, a few meetings ago, when Megan was in here talking about all of the work that they're doing as social workers to provide numerous avenues. And building bridges is a great component for that, too, working with incoming resources and trying to get stable housing. And then through Kenny Vento, you know, so far, what's, you know, the sad part about Mount Horford is that there isn't a lot of affordable housing. And so that's about, that's starting to change a little bit, which is exciting, that some of our families then end up living in Corona or having to move out. And so, we're trying to, trying to help support the kids staying here within our district, so. So, yeah, so, when we move on to kind of student services team, so, you know, the last year, two years ago, we did the Dane County Youth Risk Survey, and then this, or last year, we did the WRBS. So the data that you're seeing is through the WRBS, which is, they just changed so many of the questions, and so it's really, it's really hard to look from apples to apples. If you looked at the report, the questions became not even the same question. So where this one wasn't even really comparable to last year, where this one was, do you have one supportive adult besides a parent? Last year's are really focused on, do you have a teacher within your building who can support you? And that's really what we want to get to, right? Like, we want to, we know that the most important part of our job is building relationships with kids, and so the more we can connect with this, and so we're going back to the Dane County Youth Risk Survey for next year, and so we're excited to see some more consistent data of that. This was another question. It's, it's still good data, but it's such a different question. Last year's data, and in the past, it said, in the past 30 days, how often did you felt nervous, anxious, or unhinged? And this year it said, have you had problems with anxiety within the past 12 months? And it's, that's still a really alarming number, right, that we need to look at, being fifty percent of our high school students are sort of having problems with anxiety. One of the great things that is really kind of pushed is the push for teaching resiliency and teaching direct strategies. And so on the next slide, you can see the work that the middle school did, and so they really had an initiative last year to really work on what are specific coping strategies. And so those are body scans, deep breathing, square breathing, visualization, meditation, mindfulness. And then at the end of the year, they did a survey, right? How many of you recognized two or three of these strategies? And you saw 96% had said yes, they would, they know what those strategies are. And then you have, did I need to use one of these strategies to manage stress? And so you have 40%, 41% of students who've used one of the strategies that were explicitly taught to their students. And so, that's a pretty high number, and that's a great number, and, you know, the strategies that are being taught are being used. So, and then this is just another point of reference, this is a little bit closer, and it seems to have declined with last year, just if you just go to the agree to strongly agree, do I feel that I belong at this school? So 63% of high schoolers last year said that they belong, or last year, it was about 75%. And then... So then, you know, some of the new things that we kind of implemented last year that continue to, you know, as well, is continuing to work on all of the things with building bridges, the wellness committees, we continue to work with organ mental health, but we've also brought it down to the IC level. We were just six through 12 before, but now we're, we've opened it up for students at the intermediate center. A lot of the good work, including students in the Dane County Equity Summit. We've, you know, specifically myself has been part of the Dane County Children's Health, Mental Health Collaborative, and through that, we've actually presented as students, like, some, Diane and I presented last year in our district's response to a lot of things that have happened in our district, and all of the stuff that we've kind of put together and implemented, and the groups and the organizations have become a model site where other districts are asking us about what we've done, what's our response, and how are we helping support kids around mental health and wellness. So they've asked me to be on a best practices work group, and so what we're really working on now is, right, my progression, the progression of three years, really, right, of being reactive, being proactive, and now it's really about how do we move forward and do the most fidelity in evidence-based practices work? Instead of five groups, can we do four groups that are really better, more would implement with fidelity? And so we've done the presentations across the state, we did Youth Frontiers, that ended last year and then through this year, and then we're just continuing to get training on resiliency, and training students on resiliency. We've also implemented a new universal suicide risk assessment protocol, and so all of the student services staff have been trained in that, K through 12th grade. And then through that document, it has all staff response as well as more of the student services, right? So what do you do if you get a phone call, or you're at home reading a paper, and you believe that a student is potentially suicidal? What are your steps to do? And all certified staff at the middle school and high school have been trained in that protocol, and then that's been implemented this year. So those are kind of some of the newest, latest, greatest things.
Can you explain the Youth Frontiers initiative?
Yeah, so Youth Frontiers is a workshop that was done in fourth grade, seventh grade, and in ninth grade, and it is kindness, courage, and respect. And it, I believe that it was, it was really well-received by all grades, and it was a really phenomenal response. I had some teachers come up to me afterwards and said, all right, I know you did it for one year, and you'll never be able to stop. It was powerful, it was impactful, and it was... Instead of five groups, can we do four groups that are really better, more would implement with fidelity? And so we've done the presentations across the state. We did Youth Frontiers that ended last year and then through this year. And then we're just continuing to get training on resiliency and training students on resiliency. We've also implemented a new universal suicide risk assessment protocol. And so all of the student services staff have been trained in that K through 12th grade. And then through that document, it has all staff response as well as more of the student services, right? So what do you do if you get a phone call or you're at home reading a paper? And you believe that a student is potentially suicidal, what are your steps to do? And all certified staff at the middle school and high school have been trained in that protocol. And then that's been implemented this year. So those are kind of some of the newest, latest, greatest things.
Can you explain the Youth Frontiers initiative?
Yeah, so Youth Frontiers is, is a workshop that was done in 4th grade, 7th grade and in 9th grade. And it is kindness, courage and respect. And it, I, I believe that it was, it was really well received by all grades and it was a really phenomenal response. I had some teachers come up to me afterwards and said, all right, I know you did it for one year and you'll never be able to stop. It was powerful, it was impactful and it was. Seen it in the grade now.
Yeah, I was actually, I was there, so was Cree, I think for the 7th grade one.
Yeah.
And it was, man, it was, it was really, really cool to see both my peers in leading the group just kind of reflecting on middle school. I think we definitely had some perspective on what we would have done differently and how we would have treated people. And I, I'm going to be honest, I volunteered for it because it came up in NHS. I was like, oh, that seems cool, you know, 7th grade wasn't my best year. Maybe we can make this better for people. I walked out of it and went home and just like, it was crazy. You had kids who had said to me, like, I have said X, Y and Z to these people and I can get away with it because I'm this type of person. But that's really bad, I shouldn't do that. Like there were kids who were admitting like, I shouldn't treat people this way. Who had said that that was a pattern of behavior that they had been pursuing. They had been saying negative things about people and antagonizing people for whatever reason. And there were also a lot of kids, this was a group of kids, my 8th grade year, it was the same group of kids that I was tutoring over at the IC when they were in 4th grade. And I did advanced math and some kind of catch-up reading. And so I worked with a lot of students who had some learning difficulties and also some students who were maybe in a different place intellectually and felt a little socially isolated. And in working with those kids again and just kind of seeing how they've grown and how they interact with each other and seeing those kids from completely opposite ends of the spectrum grow around and give each other hugs and just, it was, it was fantastic. I have a brother in 6th grade who I worry about sometimes and I walked out of that and I was like, it was crazy, it was really cool.
And you have a brother also who's a freshman who would have gone to you as well?
Yeah.
Any replies from that grade club?
I think you get out of it what you put into it. He said basically that the girls all cried. And, but even he said that out of a more socially affluent group of guys, that there were guys who stood up and said, I know that I make jokes and I think I've taken some things too far and I have people who apologize to you. So it wasn't lost on, it wasn't lost based on just your own perception of yourself, I think. I think everyone walked away with something to think about, even if they didn't say it aloud.
My, my son is also, took it when he was in 7th grade. And he, his response was, well, that was a lot of talking about feelings. So, all right, and, and he said, but he still talks about it.
Right.
And so it's one of those, you know, you gotta put up with that wall, right? Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, I think at least for me, I saw two groups of kids, the groups of kids who were carrying a lot of emotion that they didn't know how to process, who were kind of able to go, oh, okay, this is what this is, I can deal with this. And then there were the kids who were just completely not carrying as much heavy, either because they had found an outlet for that already or because they felt pretty comfortable with themselves. And even if they weren't the ones crying or confessing their misdoings or everything, I think it was almost just as valuable for those kids to see that their peers are struggling. And then to see how their peers resolved that, I think there's a strong lesson in there, even for the kids who maybe didn't feel so touched by all the feelings. I don't know, I thought it was really powerful.
So I volunteered at the 4th grade level one. I think so Youth Frontiers is out from Minnesota and they, they have like three or four counselors that come in and then they recruit volunteers from the high school and the community to help lead their role exercises. So in 4th grade, it's a lot of role-playing and skits. You don't have too much, you know, amending to do in 4th grade necessarily. But what I found really interesting was that the staff participated too. And some of them said some apologies to each other in front of the, in front of the students and meant it. And so I thought that was really effective and I certainly think that if we had the budgets to do that again, it would still be very well overseen.
Also, the student feedback about the staff was incredible. One of the talks that we did in small groups was about courage. And you had to write someone down on the paper that you thought showed courage. The groups were split up by homeroom. And I expected, you know, my mom or my dad or Superman or, you know, kids being silly. I think everyone but one person out of my nine-person group or whatever it was said Ms. Beekner, which is their homeroom teacher. And that was, I love Ms. Beekner, so, and she really is a very courageous person. So I think they do, like staff participation, they do look up to staff. So I think seeing the teachers be a little bit goofy, but also quite real was a cool part of that.
Yeah, I just heard over and over how powerful it was for students and for staff. And now what I'm excited to learn about in the months to come, so you do your, your one-day workshop, right? And then it's all about then continuing it forward. And there's, there's ongoing lessons and continuous kind of ways to bring it back. And so to see how that like, is it a one and done or is it, is it truly ongoing? And so when we picked the date specifically to do it, the staff had asked to do it as close to the beginning of the year as they could so that they could instill the values continuously throughout the year. So, so we're excited to talk to staff at the end of the year and kids too and see.
How will that follow forward? Will we do it again next year? Is that the plan or?
That is absolutely the hope, yes. So, yeah, and it's always 4th, 7th and 9th, so you'll, you know, you'll catch different kids. And then one thing that we like to talk about as a, as a district is then there is an 11th and/or 12th grade leadership group. And so to instill the leadership values of kids in, you know, Kind of Youth Frontiers. There's another level too that we haven't tapped yet, so.
Great, thanks for bringing that to us.
Thanks.
Unrelated question with everything we just talked about. I was in health my freshman year first semester, so kind of before all of this initiative really started kicking in. Is there a resiliency component or a mental health component to the required health class now? I know there was kind of an organizational stress function, but mental health wasn't really touched upon, at least in the class that I was in.
Yeah, actually I just spoke with Mr. Finley. We went through that week or two ago. And the mental health and the social emotional wellbeing is there as a topic. That is an area that he would like to beef up because things are changing so quickly with our student body. So that is an area that he's open to having outside experts or resources, practitioners come in and share that, share the knowledge. So that is something he's working on right now, actually.
I had Lifetime Fitness where Kelsey came in on Fridays and did like meditation and self-awareness and things like that too. And obviously she has limited time, limited resources. But even in every other week, something like that, that was really powerful for a lot of people in that class too. And I just, I haven't obviously retaken health, so I wasn't sure what the program looked like now.
Yeah, that was one of the additions in the last few years with the fitness class, having the school site come in every other week.
Can you go, can you go back to one slide? I'm just curious if you can disaggregate the data by grade level. Oh, that's, that's it. That table, the high school one? Can that be disaggregated by grade level, do you think?
Yeah, you can do it.
I'm just curious, it just seems like, I don't know. I have an assumption that juniors would feel more belonging than freshmen, feel more in a high school and track that. These have, this, these questions have changed, so that.
But we can't say from last year.
We can. And also the staff, time, having to pack warm clothes. That might be one to keep an eye on.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Other questions?
Thanks, Brian, very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, and now we'll move on to, well, maybe not 6B. So Leah's not here today, so we could table this item until next time. And she's here to discuss that with us, so we can bring it forward.
Motion to table.
Set. Motion by Aaron, sending it back currently to table 6B for the discussion. Here, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. All right, moving on to seven action items. 7A, consider approval to send open letter regarding voucher transparency. And this comes from a community legislative engagement committee. And Dr. Serma, you'd mind to introduce this to us?
Yes, thank you. We had a nice conversation in community legislative engagement leading up to a visit that Board Member Saylor and I took to the village on asking to create or increase transparency about voucher schools. And while we were unsuccessful, we were still undeterred in our effort to message to community members how public tax dollars are being used to supplement our private school choice voucher programs. And so as an outgrowth of the work of the community legislative engagement, we thought maybe it would be helpful to fashion a letter for the board's review and consideration. And then likely send this on to not only our local newspaper, but also to our legislators. Representative Pope recently has submitted her own letter in reference to this topic. And we hope that as the legislature comes back again into session, that they might at least consider this. Do you want me to go into details or I know Board Members Heiss and Board Members Saylor were instrumental in this conversation. I think I'm missing something that would be helpful to the conversation by all means, please.
Here's another thing I think we should consider. Obviously I like the information, I worked very hard on this topic all of last year. There seems to be sort of a he said, she said going on at the Monthorv paper level, which can be kind of reputation harming all the time. And I wonder if that is still the venue with which we want to disseminate this information or if we want to keep it in-house and find other methods. And I've also been told that Sambi Pope has made this one on her state priorities and perhaps hearing her voice on it could be another outlet. I know that she's been generous and given her time to that committee in the past for sort of just variety of topics, but this would be a really focused one. Maybe she'd even want to do like a public information session on this as sort of one of the leaders trying to move this into the legislature this year. So I like the information, I'm not saying that it isn't important. I am concerned about a back and forth in the paper between two educational entities. I don't know if anyone brought a shredding so he doesn't feel strongly about it.
I, I respect your opinion, I, I think if we've got an argument to make, we've got to make it in the, in the best spot, right? And where the, and where the arguments against us are being made, that's also an important thing to think about as we're doing this kind of communication.
Perhaps maybe one of the reasons to send it out through our infinite campus messaging system, families directly.
Yeah. Maybe that's a good first place for us to start, is to send it out through infinite campus and then continue to build momentum through.
So are there things in this letter that someone would say are incorrect?
Yes, they have.
I mean, based on the other things I've read, does that, does that change what should be in here? Do we need more of a, you know, a source or how those numbers are calculated? Or is simply just putting them out there?
I kind of wondered the same thing maybe about how the numbers are calculated and how we come up with that 105. Might be helpful to be able to kind of just make sure that we're appearing to be as, you know, forthcoming with the data that we're using to determine that dollar amount.
And then source is from the Department of Public Instruction. When I wrote this, I did, I confronted with, Scott and I got on a couple of phone calls with the folks at the DPI. Certainly we weren't speaking that term in that number. Maybe we can do a better job of, like you say, sourcing it and saying according to the DPI.
Right, that's good.
The problem with the numbers that people in the other camp, they say you can't really, this is what they're saying, I mean, you can't really put a dollar figure on how much a student education costs.
Sure we can.
This is the, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to speak on the other side.
Right, right, and we're, and I just, I assume that's an argument that they've made through the Monthorv mail? I, I didn't see it.
And astrally.
And astrally. That's, that's, that's why we have to make this argument where the argument, argument against this is being, is being made. And if they're, if that's their venue of choice, then that's where, that's where we count it.
So this is an action item, I think, to, would the motion be to send it then through infinite campus first? Or are you, or through the paper all avenues?
Make a motion, whatever you want to.
That?
This is your baby.
I don't like this baby.
Well, it's very messy. You can make the motion, then we can have a discussion about the motion if it gets segmented. We can talk about whether or not we want to send it out.
Can I say something even before that? Listen, Kimberly, Kimberly is so much closer to this issue than, than I am. I would defer, I would defer to her judgment. And so if that informs, your motion that informs the discussion, that's, that's great. I'm, I, I defer to your judgment.
If you're sending it through infinite campus, are you sending it to the people that would potentially have a problem with it also? Or is this?
No, I don't think you would see it.
I mean, it could get to that, I mean, it'll be shared possibly. One of my concerns is the, the numbers. For example, the RACIN quotes that have come out, you know. One party says RACIN has lost $18 million and another party says they lost $4 million or almost $5 million. Okay, that's a big deal. We're talking about 105, 106,000. What would the other side say our number actually is? If, I'm not sure what the difference in the calculation is, but what would that number be?
I do think that when the folks from High Point Christian Academy appeared at the village meeting a couple of weeks ago, they did concede that they were receiving 105,906 dollars. They said that publicly, okay. The information that came from the RACIN program was based upon information that was disseminated through the RACIN tax bill. And so I would hope that that information would have been properly vetted so as to take away any kind of concern about the $4 million versus the $18 million. I think it just goes to this concept that it can grow and it can grow and it can grow. And how do we, how do we manage that, message that, if even, that's appropriate to me.
To me, the percentage of our budget is not even a factor because in 10 years, when someone says, so how do they get to the point where we lost? I'll say, well, I tried on year one to tell you, so you could track it, you know? Like that to me is just, it could be $10,000, but it's, it's the first time there's been a reduction in school history. So putting something down and writing that that's happened, to me is still important.
And that is one of the goals of our community legislative engagement, is to advocate. I feel, I feel strongly that the numbers are been properly vetted. I, I know that some might argue, but some of them might argue that the sky's blue too. It's just one of those kinds of things that sometimes good people can have honest disagreements.
Still an action item? Anybody with any type of motion?
Absolutely, just debating the newspaper.
I guess I would say if we sent it out through infinite campus, the reach is not as broad. There are people in our community that would not get those emails or see those messages at all. And the intended goal is to send this out to the community as a whole. We know that the best way to do that would be twofold, to send it out to all parents through the campus and then also to have it published in the newspaper.
So I was just thinking about this, if general percentages hold, then 75% of the population in the district won't get the infinite campus notice.
Motion to publish in the Montmore mail.
Only more inclusive of.
And infinite campus.
At least the impulse to me asking if we could also send it to legislators and others that disseminated publicly?
Yes. This is a hard one to get to. Motion to send it to the Montmore mail through infinite campus and through our publicly-elected officials.
Second.
Motion by Kimberly, send it to drive. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for working great job, Kimberly. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to seven D, consideration of open enrollment availability. And I see that possibly Mr. Johnson's, my background, Dr. Spock, reporting for agenda.
This document was worked on by myself and Dr. Salerno. As you, hard to remember, right, that first slide that talked about different grades, right, being in the roller coaster. And so we take the district recommendations of what class sizes should look like and then we look at what numbers, what kids will have in those grades next year and then determine our regular education numbers based on how many more students we can allocate in a grade at this point. And so this might be one of the first times that we have multiple grades that have zero across the board and that's positive for our district, that people are moving here and we're, we're full, right? Another area that's, that is kind of a change is that we've always had zero for hearing impairment and vision impairment because those are groups, those are kind of ad hoc services. And so we, we service out, we don't have a full-time hearing impaired teacher within our district. And so the, the point of open enrollment is so you don't have to add additional money, that you don't have to spend more money on kids within your district. And so, but one of the changes is that we, our speech and language numbers are really high as well. And so in fairness to the speech and language teachers, we also have zeros for open enrollment for those students as well. It's anywhere we're at.
I have a question about the nine twelve for regular education. We say unlimited, but is that truly unlimited? Because I'm just thinking at some point you've gotta be, you know, larger class sizes and higher capacities. So what is that, what was that meeting, really? Thank you.
The blueprint space size for the high school can accommodate up to thirteen hundred and thirty-four students. Right now, we have seven hundred and eighty-seven high school kids. So I'm hopeful, it would be nice to have that difference in numbers. I, I felt like it would be appropriate to say at this point, there's not any limitations, at least for next year.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Expansion has the levers too.
And what's the, Ryan, what's the, if you go down under special education, total of students, yeah, yeah, seven, what is that, what's the basis of that, that number at the high school?
So I'll pick it. Yeah, so we looked at what next year's caseload numbers would be and then we made an even number across the board. And so when you're looking at students who are in intellectual disabilities, we're kind of, we're, we're maxed out in that category.
Right.
When we're looking at specific teachers and their caseloads, so like EBD, we could allow a couple, we could allow one more student in. And looking at students who primarily have more students with learning disabilities based on their caseload numbers to be equal across the board, we could allow six in. Thank you.
So I have a question about this being an action item, only because I, I heard at another meeting, I can't remember which one, the possibility of some board members wanting to look at our class size recommendations again. Which, if, if we were to do that, and I can't remember what time of year we did that last time. Is that very good budget? Or did we do it, did we do it?
That happened generally over Education Committee.
And so we taught that must have been when it, when it came up, but we didn't really do any, and we just looked at what they were. But at that point, I thought I remember people saying, nobody else remembers that, that we talked about, we could get those again.
We did, thank you for mentioning that. We did look at the numbers at the Education Committee and then we did a study as to what other school districts were doing in terms of their numbers at each grade level. And then also square footage-wise, I looked at particularly how much space there was. At the conclusion of that conversation with the Education Committee, it was agreed that we would just put down that the information was reviewed in the bottom of the footnotes as you would typically do either adopt or change, just that it was reviewed. Certainly, we believe that the numbers that you'll see in that policy and then what we'll share with you on September, excuse me, on January the twentieth, we'll be supporting those numbers in class sizes as they are now. And that's how we base the figures that we see before you tonight. This, reason why this comes up for Board of General is by state statute, no, no later than the last meeting in January, each school board that wishes to put limitations must do so. We started putting limitations on when I arrived in two thousand and sixteen because I was beginning to see that it was difficult for us to prognosticate student enrollment and honor the board's figures based on the fact we're getting kids who are moving in in the middle of the summer. And then what we thought February did actually was much different than what would happen in September.
And that was, that was my worry was that if this were going to come up at a workshop or something coming up soon where we messed with our recommended class sizes and we already approved this ahead of time, then they wouldn't match. But it sounds like that won't be a topic until the end of the year.
I tried to make that a little bit, yes. Look, I did TPRs and what impact would be in space of that, that flexibility like.
Yeah, but you might also be worried about like the discussion that we had with this kindergarten was a little high in the form, that class size that we'd have to wash, maybe that's what.
Yeah, maybe.
And I think that's reflected in the numbers because what I heard about that kindergarten class there are a lot of needs. And I think that's probably one of the reasons we're looking.
That's a zero. Then I would move to approve the open enrollment availability numbers as presented.
Second.
Motion by Damon, second by Ron. Further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to eight, citizens' comments. All right, hearing none, the bunch nine future agenda items are listed as always. If you have anything else to add to the agenda, please feel free to reach out to myself or to Dr. Salerno.
Just enough that handouts is meaningful earlier.
Are you talking about time scheduled in the two?
Sorry. I was kidding.
She's excited. She's excited to talk about this.
So ten, schedule the next, yes.
So just for an idea.
Thank you. Plan us earlier. Otherwise, the next meetings are listed. It notes that we do have a workshop on the twentieth, so that'll be at the district conference. And now we move to eleven, closed session, kind of play a closed session per section nineteen twenty-five. Friend one, F friend, has the F friend consideration, considering a plaintiff promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data by a public inquiry over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This will be a roll call vote. Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly, yes? Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And also a yes, will take like five minutes or so. Go for that.
Good to see you.
Yeah.